All right, I'd like to call to order the type of regional school committee meeting. And welcome the building committee with us here tonight, as well as our architect, Doran Woodya. Of course, I'd like to do a roll call. Deena Trepp, Bill Buell, Dick Hodges, Luis Macarena, Jonathan Blatchett. Emily Dwyer is absent, Andy Murphy is ill, Christine Redding. All right, could we please stand for the legislature leaders?
Okay.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion or accept the agenda? We have a motion and a second for the agenda. Any discussion on the motion? No, okay. We'll vote. All those who accept the motion, accept the agenda. Opposed?
Watch the cables, guys.
Go on to the business meeting of January 16th, 2018. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes? Second. Are those opposed?
Actually, I think it was on in the committee. I think it was those minutes. It named the reason for them being voted on. Where it named Bill as chair of the superintendent search committee, I then, I don't think it then included the vote that added Dick and I as the other two committee representatives on that, on those minutes, and I think it should have.
I agree. Add that to it. Any other comment?
I moved the amendment.
The amendment add Christine Redding, Dick Hodges as committee members. All right, did we have a vote? And are those who favor the motion, please raise your hand. Opposed? Passes? Take a look at the business meeting from January 23rd, 2018. Make a motion to accept these minutes. Who moved? Any comment? Are there all those in favor of the minutes? Again, is that in favor? Okay. Okay, any public comment before we go on? Okay, thank you. In going into new business, I'd like to introduce the principal of the high school. We're gonna start with Jonathan Seymour, but I wanna remind you people that tonight is a joint meeting of the school committee and the building committee. And we're gonna start with the chairperson of the building committee, Principal Jonathan Seymour.
Thank you, Wayne. And as you pointed out, it's a little bit unique that this is a joint meeting of the two committees, so we have the school committee that has already had their roll call. I just wanna call to order the business meeting for the building committee. And I'm just gonna go around and acknowledge the different committees' members that are at the head table here, just so that you know who is who. So we have Stefan Seely right here, we have Elise de Grammer. Deena is on both committees. Greg LaRecque is on the building committee. Wayne is on both committees. Jeff is on both committees. I've been around the table. Ken Jackson here, Mike Stevens, and myself. Our agenda tonight is to hear the presentation by the architect. So I'll turn it back to Wayne, and you can go over there.
All right. For the next quite a few minutes, we're gonna talk to Jason Boone from Doran Woodya, over to my left. He'll take it up from here.
This is Jason Boone, right? He's the smarter guy out of the bunch. But my name, my name is Brad Doran, I'm a principal with Doran Woodya Architects. And it's good to see a lot of familiar faces here tonight. This is our second public meeting. We had one in Groveland a few weeks back. And so tonight, what we want to do is we want to be able to tell you a little bit about where we've been, the work that we've been doing, because we've been doing a lot. And then also to talk a little bit about the process as it relates to this project and our partners in this project with the state, which is the Mass School Building Authority for Administration. And ultimately, what we wanna do tonight is to be able to present to you the series of options that we've been working through that are a result of our work with the district administration. Through the visioning process, we've had a number of open public meetings to discuss how we wanna educate students for the next 50-plus years within the district. And you know, that's been a very transparent and open process, and so what we wanna be able to do is start to show you, you know, what we've gleaned from that, and then start to take a look at what some of the various options are going to be. So we're gonna get, Jason, I'm gonna turn this over to him, and then we'll come back later, but we're gonna give you a little bit about where we are in our schedule. We're gonna tell you some of the criteria that we've been looking at in terms of how, you know, what things are important to the district, and some of the constraints that we have to deal with as part of this project. And then we're gonna go through the options, and then we're gonna give you a little bit more information about where we have to go throughout the process as we lead to a town vote sometime later this year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jason, and we'll start the process off.
Thanks, Brad. Also send a good evening to everyone. Just by a show of hands, how many of you have not been to one of our meetings to date? Okay, that's good for us to know. In addition to the agenda, we wanna let you know that we're gonna pause several times during the presentation and give you an opportunity to ask questions. For those of you who haven't been here previously, we know this can be a lot of information to digest in a relatively short timeframe, so we do have those moments of pause, and please don't hesitate to ask questions if you have them. We're happy to answer them. So to start, for those of you who aren't aware, the project is a partnership with a quasi-governmental agency called the Massachusetts School Building Authority. They potentially provide some of the funding for the project, and because of that, there's a very rigorous process that has to be followed. And two of those major steps, one of which we're in right now, and one of which we're gonna hopefully enter into in the summer, are what they call Modules Three and Four. So this slide is meant to represent where we've been over the last several months, where we are currently, and then where, like I said, where we hope to go over the summertime. So just to quickly orient you, we started back in the fall of last year, and for the bulk of this Module Three, what they call the feasibility study, we've been doing a lot of information gathering, talking to a lot of folks. We had some public visioning sessions where I invited people to think about the future of education, where we discussed what built examples exist around the Commonwealth and around the country. We've talked to students, teachers, faculty and staff of both the middle school and the high school. And we've leveraged all of that information in the second half of the feasibility study to develop a full range of options, and we're unveiling them tonight. This is the first time we've made them available publicly. At the end of this first phase, we have to make a submission to the MSBA called the preliminary design program. And the intent of that first submission is to take these many options that we have around the room tonight and whittle them down to what we call a shortlist. A set of options that we wanna explore in more detail, and which options we don't think need further consideration. So the primary objective of you being here tonight is to provide input to these two bodies, the building committee and the school committee, to help them make that first decision. So here we are tonight with our public meeting. We're gonna submit this PDP next month, in a couple of weeks. And then after that process is complete, we make our second submission at the beginning of May, where we're taking this few options that we've explored in further detail and narrowing it down to the one, the one preferred scenario. After that, we move into schematic design, where we work out all of the nuance, all of the details. That's really where the heavy design lifting starts. In this first submission, there are a couple of key things that these two committees will be voting to approve, none of which are the exact option that we're gonna move forward with. So here's a shortlist of them over here. That they understand the condition of the existing buildings. Our team performed a detailed set of facility assessments around the middle school and the high school. As Brad mentioned, we've defined now what the education that's gonna happen in this building looks like. That's a narrative document. We've articulated what every single space should be in the two scenarios we're exploring. We're exploring a nine-through-12 scenario, and we're exploring a seven-through-12 scenario. So all of our options are based on those documents with every single space characterized. The committee has started their review of all of the options, and then with your input from tonight's meeting, their final step in this first submission will be to approve the shortlist of alternatives that are gonna move forward. This is a graphic representing that, and just a little bit about Nolan Plager here. As I mentioned, we're going from the many to the few, but we've decided to try to make this as easy as we can. So RP stands for repair. It's a certain type of option that we need to explore as part of the process. R stands for renovation only. AR is addition renovation, and N is new construction. So as we move around the room, you'll see that each option has one of those labels associated with it. One of the big picture things coming out of visioning, and we shared a version of this at our public meeting last time, was what we're trying to achieve with these options. And so whether it's a nine-through-12 only, or a seven-through-12 middle high school, we heard similar things. And so what this graphic is trying to tell us is that if it's a middle high school scenario, that there needs to be a fair level of separation between the middle school students and the high school students. And I'll show you a little bit more about that on the next slide. On this ground floor, that community access was really important. If there's gym spaces, or auditorium spaces, or black box theater spaces, that those should be in a position that they're easily accessible by the community. The other thing that this graphic is trying to represent is a different vision for the student dining space. That instead of it being sort of an enclosed room like we're in tonight, that perhaps it's the connective tissue between all of these public spaces, more akin to a college student center than we might think of as an elementary school cafeteria. So that's what this green bar is trying to depict, this, at least on the ground level, perhaps it's the connective tissue between all these public elements. And we're trying to achieve that in all of these options. Upstairs, as I mentioned, it was very clear in all of our previous public meetings and our visioning that, you know, high school wanted its own space, and middle school wanted its own space, perhaps even including separate high school and middle school guidance areas. And even on the upper floors, perhaps the library or the student dining commons again serves as some of the connective tissue between the two halves of the project. So with that, I'll pause for a moment and give it back to Brad to talk about the kind of criteria that we're looking at to evaluate these options.
So, can everybody hear me? So when we've been working with the working group and with the building committee, we had a fairly extensive list of criteria that we were looking at. And ultimately, all of those criteria are gonna be important, but as we start to go and look at this particular phase, as Jason said, when we're going, narrowing the many down to the few, it's important to remember that at this point in time, we're not selecting the final option. We're really looking at where we're going to boil this down to perhaps three or four in that range of options from 10. So when we started to look at this, we said, at this point in time, you know, what really is important that we should be looking at? We talked about grade configuration, as Jason was saying, looking at, if you look over on this side of the room, those are high school only options. And when you look at these options over here, these are middle high school options. And the district and the MSBA have agreed to look at both potential grade configurations as a solution. Then what type of construction are we looking at? As Jason alluded to, you know, with our system, you can see here in terms of the option, we're looking at repair options, we're looking at renovation options, which are different because when we're talking about repair, we're actually not looking at trying to go and alter the educational program, we're just looking at trying to upgrade the building to make it compliant with code. When we look at renovation, we're looking at trying to be able to go and make the building, bring that up to code using the existing building, as well as trying to address, excuse me, the educational program requirements. And then finally, we look at, excuse me, renovation addition. We have some of those right there, you can see on the first board, as well as new construction options. Phasing, I was actually having a discussion with Chris Redding tonight, because she has a daughter that actually is in seventh grade right now. And phasing is an important criteria, because when we go, whether it's a repair option, whether it's a new construction option, we're going to be doing construction while we have students, okay, on the site and in the building. And phasing is important, because it potentially increases the duration, it increases the effect that it's gonna have on students and educators while we're actually doing the construction, and ultimately, it has an effect on the cost. The more phasing we do, the more costly it is, the more disruptive it is, and the longer that the project would take. So those are all factors that we looked at when we're considering these options. And then finally, as Jason will get into in more detail, you can see, okay, on all of these boards, that there's different potential locations that we explore. All of these criteria factor into the selection process. So when we're talking about grade configuration, you can see on the upper half there in all green, right, those are high school only, or those four boards that are over on the left side there. And all of those look at going in some type of intervention with the high school, whether it's a repair, whether it's new construction, whether it's an addition renovation project, but only looking at the high school. For purposes of comparing, and this is an important point, for purposes of comparing all the different options, even if we were just touching the high school only, we would also be making some type of consideration associated with the middle school, so that we have a comparative basis. In other words, if we decided that we were gonna go and build a new high school, we would also make an assumption that we would be going and repairing the middle school to make that building code compliant. So that if we were looking and comparing that to a middle high school new construction option, similarly, a high school option would also have the middle school being repaired, so that we have kind of an apples-to-apples comparison. Everybody understand that? It's an important distinction, because one of the things, okay, that goes along with that is what the MSBA will participate in. The MSBA, okay, will participate in certain projects, but not all projects. If you don't have a 50-year solution, they won't participate in that. If it doesn't meet the district's educational program, they won't participate in that. So we've looked at some of these that they will participate in, and some of them they won't, and we've tried to evaluate it on that basis, and we'll go through that in more detail. So you can see on the lower half here, in terms of the grade configuration, the important takeaway is that what we've tried to do is we've tried to create that appropriate level of separation that we've heard, okay, as a result of visioning sessions and working with the district, between the middle and the high school. And I think that we've been successful, okay, sometimes more than others. You can see in option AR1, whoops, excuse me. Right there, we don't have quite as much grade configuration as we might hear. And part of the reason for that is when we're dealing with a new construction option versus a renovation, and we'll talk a little bit about this when we talk about the type of construction, it's easier to work with a clean slate when you're working with a new building than if you're working with a building that's already in place. You can imagine when you're trying to reconfigure walls and you have structure, you don't have quite as much flexibility with an existing building as you would with a new building. You're not able to do quite as much, it's not quite as easy to go and do it. So in that particular option, you can see the way it's configured, we don't have quite the same level of configuration, of, excuse me, separation there.
And actually, Brad, before you go on, can I just add to that quickly? Related to this grade configuration question, the district has done actually quite a lot of work of polling the community at a lot of different levels. The first level is at our public visioning sessions, the second level was in several thought exchange explorations, and almost universally, what we heard was a preference for the seven-through-12 grade configuration. There's an awful lot of synergy, and the district is actually already operating that way despite having two separate buildings. So that's one of the bits of feedback we'd like to confirm with you all tonight, that same preference for the seven-through-12 rather than the nine-through-12 only.
So we're gonna go through each one of these in terms of those criteria that I spoke about, so this is your opportunity. So you got a question?
Sure, I do, Brad. Billy Dwyer.
53 Hadley Road in Merrimack here. And I have my question, but I'll apologize ahead of time, because I wasn't really up to speed on like pre-feasibility or anything, so I'm kinda new to this whole process.
That's okay, a lot of people here are.
So I guess my question is, basically, how did we get to where we are? In other words, is the school that we now have non-functional? Is it, is it a maintenance condition where it's not feasible to move ahead with it, or is it cost-effective to go through these other options? And then the other piece of the question is that, back to the 50-year plan, did somebody do a study of student enrollment over that period of time to see if it's declining, enlarging, and you know, all that stuff?
So we'll take the last one first, because that's the easiest. So the district has worked with the MSBA to do an enrollment study, which is an enrollment projection for over the next 10 years, and the district has agreed on a design population for both the high school and the middle school. And consistent with what we've seen across the state, okay, we've seen declining enrollment across the state, and we see that here, okay, in Penn Tucket as well. And so the deal that we have made with the state, and I use deal kind of loosely, right, is what we're following. We're at 935, 65 for the middle school high school, and 605 for the high school. So all of our information, okay, and design concepts are predicated on that. The first question that you ask is, you know, what's the condition of the high school, and have we taken that into account in some of the work that we've done? So we actually have had our firm on the architecture side, we've had a host of engineers, mechanical, civil, we've had landscape architects, we've done some hazardous materials review, and we've completely canvassed both schools to understand what the condition is of those schools. And for people who have students in the schools right now, I think everybody understands, right, that the situation with the schools is, they're in pretty rough shape. You know, they're 60 years old, they're tired, they've had some situations with some of the flooding that's there, there's actually, you know, some good imagery that we have, you know, well, it depends on who you are, whether it's good or not. After the flood, which shows, you know, the water line about four feet up of the building in the middle school, and created a sinkhole in the building where they actually had to inject about 18 feet, thereabouts, I think, of ground under the building to keep the building propped up. So from our perspective as design professionals, we look at that and say, the building is getting a little tired. Any building can be fixed and be repaired. It really becomes a question of what cost, and some of the value decisions that we have to make in terms of, are we meeting the educational objectives that we have with that space? That, however, is exactly what we're doing with all of these options. So when we look at, for example, RP 1.1 that's right behind Jason, that option right there, okay, recognizes status quo with respect to buildings, however, we're bringing them up to code. And so we won't be addressing, because it doesn't currently meet the educational program, we will be effectively creating a 50-year repair solution with that building without addressing the educational requirements. Similarly, when we get into renovation, we're starting to take the next level up, we're looking at how can we do some minor renovations so that we can address some of the educational requirements there? There would be compromises made, because there wouldn't be the right size, for example. But, you know, and again, we look at the price of all of these and compare them, and we'll talk a little bit about that later in the presentation. Does that answer your question?
Hello, I'm Sandy Venter, and I sit on the capital planning committee. Along that line, I was just wondering, because clearly with these options, we're looking at more of an emphasis on doing things with the high school. So I trust that when we get to non-compliance, potential non-compliance with code, real structural issues, et cetera, apparently the high school must be in worse shape than the middle school?
I think...
If Greg Hadden were here tonight, he would tell you that this light's on very loud. I don't think you're wanting to hear it.
Make sure the green light's on.
Louder when I turn it on.
Yep.
If Greg Hadden were here, he would tell you that there's a lot of problems that are existing in the middle school as well. The reason that we're focusing on the high school predominantly or middle high school solutions is because that was the arrangement, okay, that was made as part of the process with MSBA. So again, though, when we're evaluating different options, and even if it is a high school only solution, our assumption is, is that we would also be going back and looking at what the cost requirement would be, and what the physical requirements would be to repair the middle school. So that way, if we were to, for example, to go and do a new high school, the assumption would be that we would fix up the middle school, but we wouldn't be building a new middle school. Does that answer your question?
And let me just add to that, reiterating what Brad said earlier, we're taking the campus-wide sort of 50-year view with all of these options. So in any one of these high school only options, it's important to note that the MSBA is only gonna participate in this part of it. And we're taking the view of cost estimating, what it would take to bring this into compliance, the same as a new building might be, but entirely on the three towns dime, no MSBA reimbursement. So as Brad will talk about in a little bit, that makes a big difference in how you view the entire campus on grade seven through 12. Other questions?
Just to add to that, one other thing, for those of you who aren't in this day-to-day, the district has received a reimbursement rate of about 52%. It probably won't actually materialize at that level as an effective reimbursement rate, however, the value of that, as we get into cost, comparative cost comparison, will become very evident. So when, as Jason said, when we look at a middle school solution that's not part of the middle high school solution, that's something that the district would be paying for entirely by itself, without any MSBA help.
Thank you, Rob Point-Groveland. So I heard 52 cents on the dollar, but is it clear from every option what that reimbursement, that participation might be?
So it will be, 52% would probably be on the high side of what we would get. It depends on which option it is, in terms of whether it would be 50 cents on the dollar or not. And we've taken that into account when we, I don't wanna really dwell on cost yet, we're gonna have a slide that's gonna talk a little bit about that later, but we've taken that into consideration for each one of these options, to do a comparative cost analysis between them all, kind of working with a level playing field. Thank you.
Nick Tazian, Church Street, Merrimack. I have an issue with the communication that's going to the members of the community in each town. We in Merrimack, as citizens of Merrimack, have no handouts at meetings. I don't think you have in Midwest Newbury. We didn't have them at the first meeting. And I'm making the request that we have handouts from now on, because it's very difficult for, number one, for us to digest this, and you've admitted that, and number two, that there's a lot of people who aren't here, who deserve a chance to see what's going on, even though they have the opportunity to be here, they might not be able to be here. So I ask that as a consideration that you take up. And secondly, there's one thing that continues to bother me, and that is the fact that when we get down to the end, there'll be one option, I was told, just one option, and the decision-making is... And the decision-making is being done in advance, basically, because the public who vote on this, who pay for this, won't have a first, second, and third choice. They'll have one choice to say yes, or one choice to say no. Now, depending on what they do, I would hate for them to say no. But if they can't afford it in towns, all three towns, they're liable to say no. And then we have to start the process, I would guess, all over again, because there isn't a second option. Is that true?
Yes, however, there's a proviso in there, right? So part of the reason that we go about this process the way that we go about it is because there is, as Jason had said, I think, on that very first slide, there is a very prescriptive process that the MSBA dictates that we follow. So what we're doing here really follows to the letter what the state requirement is in order to go and allow for them to be able to participate in the process. With respect to, I think, the question that you raise in terms of that the communities, you know, will only have one option when it comes time, you know, at town meeting to vote, I think that part of that is because when we get to town meeting, right, and I'm a West Newbury resident as well, so, you know, we have some skin in the game on this too, is that we have to be able to make a decision on something that we're going to move forward on. And everybody needs to be looking at that same something. If everybody is looking at two or three things, we'd never really be able to flesh that out at town meeting as to which one is the appropriate one. So it's incumbent, I think, upon the building committee, who's been appointed, you know, to run this on a day-to-day basis, on the school committee, right, to really be looking and be more focused on, I think, what I would characterize as some of the educational requirements, and the project team, right, that there was a fairly extensive process that went through to hire our firm and, I think, the 20-some-odd consultants that we have that are coming along with us, as well as Vertex, who Steve Farron is here from Vertex, your owner's project manager, to have us as design professionals, you know, be able to help guide you through that process. And what we want to ensure, right, and I appreciate you being here for this meeting as well as the last meeting, and I hope we see you at the West Newbury meeting, is that, you know, this is a transparent process. We want everybody to come out for us. We want everybody to participate in the visioning process. We want as much feedback as we can possibly get. I can speak for us as the design team. We take it seriously. We really, you know, listen to what came out of those visioning sessions and have really tried to incorporate those things, even at this very early stage of design. And Jonathan and the superintendent and the other folks can speak for themselves, but I think everybody really wants us to be an open process. With respect to handouts, okay, if that's what everybody wants to do, we're happy to do that. But what I also can say, right, is that these presentations, okay, are available on the district website. So we want people, right, to come out, but we also recognize that people have other obligations. And if they can't come out, this information, okay, is available on the district website. And if anybody had any questions, I know Jonathan has kind of a mechanism that's going on to be able to funnel questions through him, and we will get back to them. So does that address your question? Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Warren Brown. What do you want to say? One tenant, because I've learned just in different areas, is that you clarify where you're saying the state will participate only in certain options. Much like the, if it's not in color, they don't participate, which means that the district has, especially, is their own gallery. And then as you move along, over towards the right, much like the state is probably involved, like the way that you mentioned. But what would really be helpful, maybe it's too early to do so, is that a ballpark figure at what the expense of each one of these options is. I think in a lot of ways, that'll almost make it easier to come to an import. But over here, you'd say, why waste $100,000, the district would have to put money on its own, and really not even bring us up to code here, and we all will do a bring us up to code. And you might get all the way over on this side, spend this, you'll get a lot more money, but at least the state will be paying half of it. So is there, you know, sometime in the presentation, if you put some kind of money on this, the expense, or you're being...
All is a big one, right? Because, you know, you're never free, right? It's never free. But let me just ask you, I think, this is good. We want people, right, we want that feedback. But how about that grade configuration, right? Because we're going to go through each one of those criteria that I spoke about, and then we're going to go, and Jason's going to give a presentation of all of these options one by one. And, you know, we've got as much time as you folks have, right, so that you can understand each one of those. And then after that, we're going to go through a kind of comparative cost evaluation of the options compared to each other. I'm probably not going to get you 100% of the way home, I'll tell you that right now, in terms of what's the number. And the answer for that is, I don't know yet, because we don't and have not performed any design, any real design on these yet, to be able to come up with that number. However, we do have a very good sense of how they relate to one another to give you a sense of which one, you know, is more expensive or less expensive than the other, and we're going to share that with you tonight. But does anybody have any more questions as it relates to the grade configuration, which again, is high school-only versus middle-high school solutions? Because if you don't, I'm going to move on to the next one. Type of construction. So here, in the darker red, okay, that represents an existing school building or, and a kind of a continuum of, as we talked about, up here, RP 1, repair-only. And then you can see all the way over here on addition renovation 1.1, again, high school-only, certain areas of the building which would be added to in order to meet the program. The basic takeaway here is, is that if you have an existing building, think about this building, if you were to go and try and renovate this building into a different type of space, is it harder or easier to be able to reconfigure this as compared to a new one? The simple answer is it's harder, particularly when you get into smaller spaces. And so the type of construction, while it might be, you might think, well, it must be cheaper, right, to go and renovate than it is to go and build new. That may not necessarily always be the case. And we're going to explain that a little bit when we get into the cost. But these options run the gamut from, again, as we've already spoke, so I won't dwell on it, from repair all the way through new construction, two stories, three stories, different locations on the site. Does anybody have any questions as it relates to type of construction?
A couple slides back, you have a picture of the high school gym. I didn't see anything. If we're talking about shared facilities for a combined project, what...
If we're talking about combining the middle school and the high school as shared facilities, I didn't see anything up there for the middle school gym. Would it be something like what Hamilton has done with a capital T being the middle school gym, and then a state-of-the-art high school gym, making the bottom of the T?
So we've worked this out with the working group and with feedback from faculty, staff, and the visioning sessions, and we have a list of spaces that will serve the health and PE curriculum. We don't yet know what the exact arrangement of those spaces are, but what I can tell you about them is that there's a competition gymnasium in that space summary that I mentioned earlier, that's about twice as big as what your high school gym is currently, with the idea that that needs to be sized for competitions. And then there would be additional health and PE space over and above that, you know, things for weights or for fitness, space that we might call a movement studio, that's sort of a half a gym size. So we've worked through what the needs are with the faculty, staff, and the working group, and that's what's articulated in our space summaries to serve both the middle school and high school populations.
Any other questions related to type of construction? Okay.
Brad, on the back side.
My question is, has any kind of evaluation been done on life, actual lifespan of renovated space?
Great question. So one of the common bases of comparison here, and it's a requirement of the MSBA, is that all buildings, whether it's a renovation project, whether it's a repair project, any type of project that they're going to participate in would require a useful life of 50 years. So our kind of design parameter then, that we would be looking at for any one of these options as a basis of comparison, would be a 50-year useful life, regardless. Any other questions? Okay, moving on to phasing. So phasing, as I mentioned earlier, has to do with, when you're going through a construction project, whether it's a renovation project, or for that matter, even if it's a new construction project, if you think about the fact that we're going to be doing, you know, a significant amount of work on this site, there will be some type of phasing going on. I characterize it sometimes as, when we get involved in a construction project, we're going to break a couple of eggs. Okay, there are going to be some things, okay, that are going to be a challenge. It's just a fact of construction. If any of you have gone through a renovation at your house, you're well aware of that. Our job, okay, is to try and minimize that to the greatest extent possible, and we will. However, depending upon the option that we're selecting here, right, there is built-in complexity that's associated with those types of projects and the phasing associated with that. So for example, okay, starting up on the top-left corner there on RP 1.1, as you can imagine, if we're trying to go and repair a building and do a 50-year useful life on that building, even if we're not addressing the district program, we're trying to bring that building up to code, and we're talking about replacing all of the systems, putting on a new roof, making the building envelope, insulating, all of those things that currently aren't up to snuff right now, you can imagine when we're trying to do that and move construction crews around and machines, when we've got students in the building, that that's more complex. And the way that the contractor's going to approach that is they're going to try and approach that, you know, piece by piece by piece, because we have to move students around. And when we're moving students around, because we've got to go and open that up for construction, what do we do with them? We've got to move them somewhere. So we're either going to be moving those students into some type of arrangement, okay, that where we've got some open space. We're familiar with that a little bit right now, right, with what's going on with Page School. Or we'll try and have to move them, if we don't have enough space, into modular classrooms that we would have to either buy or lease. In either case, there's a cost associated with that. And so we look at that, and we've imputed the cost associated with that, the complexity of the various options that we're looking at. And we've tried to go and comparatively, again, look at the various options and say, how much phasing do we have? Because it affects duration, it affects disruption, right, and it affects cost. So it's an important part of the decision-making process when we look at the various options. So RP 1.1, which is repair, complicated, because it's one building, we're touching all aspects of the building, and we have to move the kids around. So it's long, it's complicated, it's disruptive, and ultimately, we're probably going to have to get some modulators there to take care of some of that problem. RP 1.1, which is a renovation, same basic issue. Addition renovation 1.1, same thing. Addition renovation 1.2, and again, it comes back to that flexibility issue that I was talking about when we're talking about using the existing building. Jason's going to go through these in more detail, but you can get the idea here that if we're looking at the N 3.3 and 3.2 options, which the location there, if you've looked, is behind the high school building, the notion is, is that we will be able to build the new building in behind, have it almost as a separate construction area, and therefore the students would be able to stay in the middle school and the high school as currently it's working right now. And therefore, we wouldn't have to relocate. We'd build the building and then move the students in after the building's built. We'd come back, we'd demolish the old building, and then we'd go through the fields. And that is, you know, when you look at the new options, you can see that depending on which option it is, it has less phasing associated with it. Does anybody have any questions about phasing? This is an important one.
So with new construction, what is the general timeline? I know this is very complex, but it needs to take a year, start to finish, or it's two years? For N 3.1, you know, where there's no phasing, where you're putting something out back?
Yeah. So we would generally look at this building in terms of the building construction, somewhere around two years, 24 months, to build the new building. Then we'd have to come back, right, once we move the students and staff into that new building, then we'd have to come back, demo, right, and then go and do the site work associated with the fields. So a lot of these options, when we're looking at the one that you're talking about there, is probably in the order of 30 months, somewhere around that timeframe. Depends on where it all starts and finishes, weather-related as well, you know. We want to be able to hit the right time, but that, it depends a little bit. Does that answer your question?
If I may just follow up, apologize. So, and presumably, these exotic phase plans, they may be long?
Could be, yeah. You know, we're working on a project right now over in Browley in the Triton District for an elementary school that has six phases in one 90,000-square-foot building. Extremely complicated renovation. And, you know, there's a premium that the contractors go and put on top of the work just to be able to handle the amount of phasing that takes place.
For the, most of the new construction options, I think, all involve building on the football field. Does that mean the athletic teams need to relocate for year or two, or will they still be able to practice on site?
So I think the four series options actually talk about building the school up front. But to answer that question is, yeah, we would have to go and work through what some alternative locations might be for some of the athletic events, you know, while we're in construction. And there's been, preliminarily, there's been a couple of ideas kicked around on that one.
Real quick, you have to point it out, I'm so confused. I understand comparing renovation to a new building, why one would be a lot, you know, more phasing than the other, but say like N 3.2 and N 4.2, one's a lot of phases and one's no phasing. Why for a grade-new building? Would there be a significant difference on...
And I can elaborate on that. In N 3.2, what you'll see in just a minute is that it is on the current football field, baseball diamond behind the building. And 4.2 is on the front half of the site, closest to Route 113. And because of how it's oriented on the site, it would have to be built in multiple steps. And those likely steps are, build enough of it to get the cafeteria, the boiler room, right, all of the infrastructure, high school classrooms done in phase one, knock part of the high school or all of the high school down, middle school students don't get to move in yet. Then build the rest of it, then the middle school kids move in, then demolish the middle school, then do the site work. So just because of where in...
Anyone have any other questions related to phasing? If we don't, Jason's going to go and give a rundown really on all of the various options and try and bring these criteria into play as it relates to each individual option.
So the first thing I want to say about these options is we're in what we call the conceptual design phase, right? There are works in progress, we're testing feasibility. So we've done only enough work to make sure all the educational pieces and parts are there to test whether or not a scenario works in a particular location on the site. So we don't have everything completely worked out yet. Parking lots may shift a little, you know, one arm may get a little longer, a little shorter. But we've done enough work to test whether or not they're possible so that we can evaluate them all against the same criteria. And so we'll start off by showing you just the existing site to orient you. This is Route 113. The Merrimack Curve is over here. This is the high school. The supposed-to-be front door is right there. The rear front door is over there. Auditorium in the middle, gymnasium over there. This is the middle school. District offices are there. There's a perennial stream that bisects the site, so this blue area represents both the actual water and the wetlands sort of no-fly zone that's over and above the water itself. We have a retention area that was built at the same time as the existing high school, that's what that little bit of blue is. And then we have two single-family homes that abut Route 113 that are projecting into our site. And so what we want to sort of communicate about the existing site is although it feels really big, there's quite a lot of constraint here. And once we take out those no-fly zones, including what we heard about the recently renovated play fields, there's very little area to actually execute a project on. And oh, by the way, in two big chunks of it, there are existing buildings that have to remain until something else happens. In addition to all that, we're still exploring how we can impact that man-made retention area. So that's still a question mark, and it will affect how we move some of these options So what we've done is essentially divided that buildable area into four zones. In Zone 1, where the existing high school is, you can imagine that that one might be good for renovation, right? The existing building is there, perhaps we could add on to that. It's less appealing for all-new construction because we then would have to move all of the high school kids out of the building in order to execute that. If we were to do something in that area, it's likely to have, as Brad mentioned just a minute ago, lots of phasing and potentially modular classrooms necessary. Zone 2 is similar on the existing middle school. All right, we want to make sure that we turn over as many stones as we can and explore as many options as we can. So in this, we speculate about, well, what if we did have some modular classrooms and moved the middle school kids over to the high school site? Could we build where the existing middle school is? In Zone 3, we looked at the existing baseball football field behind the building. We think that it's feasible, and we'll show that in just a minute, to put an entire new building back there without impacting the existing building, so perhaps it's good for new construction options. And then finally, you see that we've overlapped the man-made retention area here. We've explored even the front of the site on those existing practice fields and part of the existing building. Perhaps it's good for both new construction and renovation, but again, because it may be impacted by the retention area and/or the existing building, modular classrooms and/or more phases may be required. So Repair 1.1, this is our baseline option. If you've come by and read the narratives on these boards up here, the MSBA requires us to look at what it would take to simply bring the building as it is up to the same codes as new construction. So fully accessible, sprinkler, you know, seismic reinforcing, asbestos subation, all of those kinds of things without improving the educational environment. In other words, not moving any walls around to reflect what we're trying to do educationally. And that's what this option is trying to do. Related to the site, as you can see in those bullets there, it would remain largely as it is, right? No improvements to any of the fields or parking. So that becomes our baseline, you know, what value do we get for doing more than what's depicted there? Renovation 1.1 is another high school-only scenario, but rather than do all those code things that I just mentioned, in addition to that, we would consider moving walls around. So imagine that, you know, we opened it up completely like a shopping mall, and the only thing we left were the floors, the structure, and the exterior walls. That would give us a lot more flexibility to meet our educational needs, but again, at what expense, at what value? As Brad mentioned, the end result of this is something that doesn't quite work for the educational program. And we can't quite get every single space in, and not every single space is the right size that we would like it to be. But we explore it to see how people feel about that as a compromise. In terms of the site, just like the previous one, all those site features would remain largely the same. In addition to renovation 1.1, I'll just talk about the sequence here a little bit. Because of the size and location of many of the spaces in the high school, there's not a lot of high-value spaces to save. When we execute these projects in other places, perhaps there's an oversized auditorium, or there's a really great fieldhouse, and we want to shape the project around those things that we wouldn't get otherwise. For good or bad, that's not the case in your existing high school, right? The auditorium really only has around 450 seats. As you all know, the existing high school gymnasium is well undersized. And so in this option, we're speculating about keeping the core and renovating that, but then using additions to improve the health and PE sections, and then to add on these two classroom wings so that we can relocate the front door to where it wants to be relative to parking. So this is sort of a two-thirds, one-third, two-thirds renovation, one-third new construction scenario. Again, it has a fair amount of phasing. Because we're keeping so much of the existing building, again, we're not going to quite hit all of our objectives on the educational side, and we're going to have the extra negatives of additional phasing, perhaps modular construction. Because it's right where the existing high school is, again, not a lot of improvements to the site are possible. Our final nine through 12 option is new construction in the back. Notice that it's three stories, and I'll just quickly orient you. This is, as you'll see in the plans on the easels, this is the academic wing here, and it's the only portion that's three stories high. The rest of it is a single story. And so we believe that that could fit entirely behind the existing building, but for good or bad, the middle school stays as it is. So that whatever expense is associated with keeping that building maintained for another 50 years is part of what Brad will talk about in just a minute.
Right, so just to be clear on that, it would stay as it is in terms of the building that you see, the footprint of the building, if you will, but for purposes of comparison, we would be bringing that building up to code. We would be doing those types of repairs in order to have that also have a 50-year expected lifespan.
Because we've relocated the high school portion, there is some opportunity to improve some things on the site. Perhaps we can improve parking. Perhaps we can improve site circulation a little bit. But in terms of fields, a baseball field and a football field would likely still have to overlap. And if you remember that man-made retention area right there, having those fields in that location would be contingent on us being able to relocate that retention pond or retention area. Now we'll switch over to the 7 through 12 middle-high school scenarios. We'll start with a renovation addition. What we determined was that the two populations together, even at the declining enrollment that was agreed to at the MSBA, can't fit in the existing high school by itself, right? Something would have to be done. So in this case, we're keeping about three-quarters of the existing high school and then adding three-story wings off the front of that so that both the populations could be accommodated. So much like the previous renovation addition scenario, we can almost get there to meet our educational needs, but there will be some compromises. This is also the one that we showed in the grade configuration chart, where high school is largely in this portion and middle school is larger than this portion, and so they're really close together. It's not as ideal a separation between the two grade levels as was desired. And then similarly, in terms of the play fields, we are able to relocate, because we're demolishing the middle school, relocate a dedicated baseball diamond into that location. So that would result in a dedicated football field in its current location, and perhaps some parking and site circulation improvements along with that. Because of where the additions are, like that play field we just saw in the previous option, this is contingent upon us being able to relocate that retention area. This is the building on the middle school site that we talked about before. We wanted to make sure that we explored every scenario, and so just graphically, you can see that this looks like it's setting up fairly nicely. We've got all the fields on one side, we've got the school on the other side. We've met all of our educational desires because it's new construction. Some of the challenges associated with this, however, is that because there's very limited real estate on the south part of the property, and we don't want to impact this, parking would have to be fairly remote. Right, faculty, staff, and student parking would all likely have to be on the north side of the perennial stream, and perhaps they would walk down this existing path that's through the woods. Very limited, you know, visitor/guest district office parking on the south side. It also would require, with this amount of parking, the relocation of that retention area, but perhaps that parking could be shifted or made slightly smaller immediately to retain all of the fields in that particular option. In order to build this, you would have to utilize modular classrooms somewhere on the high school side to accommodate the entire middle school population during construction. In option N 3.2, just like the other all-new construction option on the baseball diamond football field, we think that this can fit, and the distinction between this and the next one we're going to show you is that this is a two-story scenario where the front doors are where those two little arrows are, with the academic portion being in these arms out front on the ground floor and wrapped around the entire U-shape of this building on the upper floor. It does meet all of our educational requirements. We get to relocate the baseball diamond to be a dedicated field at the middle school. We would, if we can relocate the retention area, we could have expanded fields on the front part of the site, if not, you know, only one field in addition. And so this is doing an awful lot of the things that we think that the options should do with the caveat that we're still unsure about that retention area. Parking could be improved, site circulation could be improved. Option N 3.3 is identical from a site planning point of view. The difference is this is an entirely three-story option. So the building footprint is a little smaller, which would give us a little more wheelroom, a little more green space, because we're going taller with the building rather than spreading it out. Then we explored putting the building up front. So in this case, N 4.1 is a three-story middle-high school. You can see that there's one sort of drop-off point on this side. Students and faculty would enter from the backside. Classrooms are in the two sides with the core in the middle. Practice fields out front, expanded fields to the northwest. Again, baseball diamond on the middle school. Site circulation could be improved, parking could be improved. The big caveat here is, actually, there are two. You can just make out that this portion of the building is overlapping the long arm that extends towards Route 113. That would have to be knocked down first, which means modular classrooms temporarily during construction. And the second one is if this man-made retention area can't be relocated, it means this option can't be constructed as diagrammed, right? Some major modification would have to occur in order to execute this idea. And then finally, our last option is similar, except it's oriented slightly differently. In this case, classrooms are along this direction with a front door right there, that's administration. PE spaces and core spaces are to the south. Again, site circulation could be improved, parking could be improved. We've got our dedicated baseball and our expanded fields where the existing baseball football diamond is. But again, just like the previous one, this one even more so overlaps the existing high school. So not only does it need modular classrooms to execute it, you're going to have to build part of it, move the high school kids in, knock the existing high school down, build another part of it, and then not move the middle school students in until the very end. And then similarly with the retention area, if that can't be relocated, this is an option that's probably not viable as it's diagrammed. So that was a very quick overview of all of the options. All hands are shooting up all over the place. John, just pick somewhere to start.
I have two questions, but I also just can't hear anyone to thank you guys for doing this.
Can you hold the microphone a little closer to you?
A lot of, it's like a lot of options, a lot of different options. So my first question is, why is the existing structure educationally conditioned? And the second question is, which option do you want?
Well, I'm not going to answer the second question because that's not our job. The first question, as many of you might know, and I would invite, you know, Dr. McQueen or Mr. Seymour to interject here, the district has been transitioning to this idea of voice and choice for streets. So they've greatly expanded the curriculum. They're getting ever closer to stitching together the 7 and 8 curriculum to 9 through 12 curriculum, and they would like the space to reflect that educational notion. At the time your building was constructed, special education didn't exist, the concept of project-based learning didn't exist, technology didn't exist, we weren't moving as much in instructional activities, so we'll stand and deliver instructional methodology. And so for all of those reasons, they're looking for the space itself to better reflect what they're trying to do educationally. And in some cases, that means creating different kinds of space that exists in the two buildings. In other cases, it means moving space around. And so there would be some compromises, in fact, there are compromises already, in trying to deliver what they want to do educationally in the existing building.
I think one of the other things there too is that it comes back to this idea of the state's willingness to participate. And so what they have is they actually have a set of guidelines that we're trying to go and address so that, for example, on room size, right? And they are really good about working with districts to be able to go and say, okay, well, if it doesn't quite meet them, that's fine. But we're going to find, and it comes back to that flexibility thing when you're using an existing building, is that we're going to, sometimes we just won't be able to make that work. Other times, we're going to be able to make some compromises and be able to fit that in the box with the state. This question right here.
So first, thanks for all the work you do because that's very impressive. But we realize after it's way more complexed. I don't think personally any easy option, any of them. Do you consider to build a different site? And maybe I miss out on the first consideration.
It's a really good question, right? Because it is a complicated site, right? You know, you look at it, you say, wow, you know, it's pretty big, but then all of a sudden, it's like, okay, we've got two buildings we've got to work around, we've got this kind of wetlands, no-fly zone, if you will, as Jason suggested. But we did take a look around the communities for different sites, but one of the things that I think, there were a couple of things actually, that drove everybody towards trying to be able to go and work with the site we have. The first thing is, is that the state does not reimburse for land acquisition. So if we were to go out and try and find another site, right, that could accommodate, you know, everything that we have on these boards, we need a pretty significant piece of property. And property isn't cheap, and that's something that the district would be paying full freight on. So that was one criteria. The second criteria is where would that be located? You know, might we find something, you know, over here, for example, by Sweets' School? And how central is that, you know, to the entire district? And while I don't know as if there's actually a perfect solution, right? We've got that river that runs through it, so to speak. There is some centrality, if you will, to where that site is, right? It's kind of right on the West Newbury-Groveland line, so if you think about it, probably somewhat centralized. And the third thing is, it's somewhat familiar, so people, you know, are used to that site there, they're used to having both those schools there. And the other benefit is, is that we are able to, with a lot of these options, utilize And the third thing is, it's somewhat familiar, so people, you know, are used to that site there, they're used to having both those schools there. And the other benefit is, is that we are able to, with a lot of these options, utilize a lot of the infrastructure that's already in place. A huge thing, okay, when we go to different communities, if you're coming to West Newbury, for example, if you were to go and build it there, we have no sewer. So here, we're able to go and tap into that because we have that extension now that's been put out to the school. We have a lot of the roads and infrastructure that are already in place. So when we looked at that, we started to make some of those value decisions that I spoke about earlier, that seemed to make a lot of sense. If we could go and make something work on the site, that it would be a preferred alternative.
Other questions?
A lot of these options have fields replacements or new fields. Are those eligible for reimbursement as part of this project? That's my first question. And then second, especially on the new construction, this whole retention site, it seems like a lot is dependent if that can be moved or changed. When we know that piece of it as part of the project?
So let me answer the first question first. The short answer is yes. The MSBA does participate in site improvements. Of course, there's a however. The however is it's subject to a cap. So the state caps its participation in sites at 8%. And you can imagine why, right? Some towns would want to put in, you know, multi-turf fields and lights and, you know, you name it. So they felt like they have to cap that somewhere. So yes, they do participate, but it's subject to a cap. The second answer, I'll let John and Brad talk more about.
So with respect to the retention area, we have had an informal meeting with the Conservation Commission, right, Conservation Commission in West Newbury. So we've started that process fairly early on because we wanted to take their temperature as to, you know, what their position would be on this. And we had one meeting, we're going to have another meeting next week with them. Historically, there's not a ton of information, you know, we're relying on some old photos and some, you know, some of the town fathers to help maybe guide that. So we're working through that. You know, will we have a definitive answer right away? Probably not. But what we're trying to do is to be able to get it to a point where, you know, we have a sense of, is this a deal breaker? And we think that some of these options, that retention pond is more challenging than others. In terms of, you know, best-case scenario, we would be able to go and relocate that somewhere or mitigate or do whatever it takes to be able to gain access to that real estate because it's very central. Whether it's, you know, a building situation, if you couldn't move it and the building has to go there, as was the case in option 4.1, you know, it's a problem that option wouldn't work. Could, you know, if it was built on the back and we had to kind of work around that a little bit, it's less profitable. Maybe we could do it, we don't know yet, we haven't gotten that far into the design.
Other questions?
We're working on it.
So I'm from West Newbury, I'm a page school parent, so I have an interesting perspective given everything we've been through the past couple of weeks. So if you, my question is about the scenarios where you would renovate the existing buildings. So I went to a play at, I believe I'm at the middle school around Christmas time with my youngest who's in kindergarten, we'll see his friends perform. I just walked down two hallways and I was horrified. I said, I cannot believe this is what a building looks like if my son is going to have to go to school. And so as far as I'm concerned, I can't even imagine how you could give that building a facelift. But my bigger concern is similar to what happened at the page school. If you renovate, how much will you not know that's lying beneath? So at the page, for those who don't know, there's black mold, there was asbestos, and people weren't aware that it's there because these are the things they're hiding. So what is the risk, to the best of your knowledge, that if these buildings only get added on to or renovated, that there's just going to be bigger problems down the line? Maybe you can speak to your experience with other buildings of this age or what some of those risk factors were be. Because, I mean, for people who don't live in West Newbury, relocating our kids, it has been really impactful on them, their, I think, their emotional health, I think their education. I mean, the teachers in West Newbury, phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal, but it takes more than staff. The building really is just as important. I passionately do believe that, so.
Obviously, we do renovations a fair amount. In fact, Brad mentioned one that we're executing in Raleigh right now. Anytime you're dealing with renovation, there's always the possibility that you're going to uncover something unforeseen. Particularly in a building where we know there's been floods, we know there's been electrical challenges, we know there's been, you know, lots of problems before, it's always higher risk with renovation. The end result, if you were to renovate that building, should be a like-new condition. In other words, it would have to be fully abated for any hazardous materials. So those things shouldn't be present at the conclusion of the project. But as you mentioned, disruption, anytime you're doing work inside an occupied building, noise, right, dust, you know, just general distraction, all of those things are manageable, but they make it a less enjoyable experience than if you were building somewhere where there aren't students. Do you guys want to add to that?
I guess I would add to that. The only maybe slight difference is, is that I think there might be some opportunities maybe not to go as far in the repair option, which is very different from the renovation option. In that a repair option, you might have some opportunities to do some type of encapsulation if you decided that you wanted to do that. As far as, you know, like the bowl scenario or something like that, in any one of the options that we're talking about here, that wouldn't be an issue. I, you know, we would be going through, we actually do base air quality monitoring, we have hazmat, people go through the entire building. And then we would be making, on any one of these options, well, any one of the renovation-repair options, we'd be making those decisions. With respect to new, there is no asbestos that's allowed in construction today. We actually have to sign an affidavit to that end.
Just to be clear, so, yeah. So I'm not really concerned about the process and, you know, disrupting the kids. I mean, clearly, if you're going to build a building, that is just going to be part and parcel of the process. I just want to make sure that, you know, if it's a repair option, that we're not just, you know, fixing a building, that down the road is going to have problems all over again, you know, because the building probably just needs to be torn down. That's more of what I was getting at.
Yep. John, over here.
Right, I'm going to go a little out of the tone here, but this is just kind of the open room, so this is, you've got to go on above the other, right? Many of the transparency is unbelievable, we've learned everything about these meetings. My fear is, is, so we're going to get to this in the fall, yes, we're going to go through this process in the fall, town meeting in September, Josh over.
Sometime in the fall, maybe November at the earliest, it'll probably be later, but I'm going to let Mr. LeBrecch speak to that a few if you'd like.
We have a pretty good showing, but this is three towns, not a ton of people here, right? So at what point do we get to the point where we need to start putting boots in the ground and we start motivating people that they need to get on board and vote on this? Because my fear is, you guys are going through this whole process, and I wasn't here 20 years ago, but it's worse for us than 20 years ago has to pass, right? So how do we get, what we get, all three towns combined? Because this is kind of our only connection to the three towns is the school system, right? So my question is, based on your experience, how do we get this thing? I know it's a raw question, if I say, I wish you didn't ask that question.
Mr. Trissey would never say that to you. So it's kind of a two-parter, right? The answer is now's the time, right? The more involvement that we have with people, as we see in every project that we've ever worked on, the more people that we have participating, the better, right? And honestly, this is pretty good. I think this is a very good, particularly after we had to go and reschedule. I'm pleased with this, right? I would be pleased if it was SRO, right, and everybody was standing here. But, okay, we're trying to go and keep people up to speed with what's going on. We're going to continue to do that. But the process tells us that what we want to do is we want to boil this down to where we get to that one option, right? And then as we get to whatever that one preferred option is going to be, that building is going to start to take on more shape, right? People are going to start to go and start to understand, because we're going to continue this process, whether you like it or not, we're going to continue to go and put this information out there. But now people will go and say, oh, I know which one it is now, right? It's a middle high school option that they're doing wherever, or it's that high school option that they're doing whatever. They'll be able to start to focus on that. And then we, because this is just what we're burdened with, right? This is what we do, we're going to start to design it. And when we start to do that, it's going to start to take more shape. It's going to have floor plans, people are going to go and say, oh, now I remember, now I understand what you mean by that auditorium and how that works with the dining commons or whatever that solution is. And then we're going to start to develop some imagery so that people will actually be able to go and put a face to that building. And there's going to be some people, guarantee you, they're going to be, I hate it, it's awful. But there's going to be, hopefully, right? There's going to be more people that are going to be saying, yeah, you know what, I'm really excited about that, okay, as an opportunity for our three communities to come together, okay, with an educational facility that we're going to be able to go and work with for the next 50 years. So that's a long answer, right? It starts now, but the critical part, in my experience, has been to continue to build momentum. We have to keep people excited about this and then the more people that we get involved as we get closer and closer to that date, and we'll get more and more information, right? At some point, right, you tried to drag it out of me last time, we're going to actually get what that number is and what that means to people in each individual community and what the impact is to each community, each member in that community. We're not there yet, but it will start to take more shape, it will become more real. And I guarantee you, by the time we get to, you know, whenever that vote is going to be, if you, if people have been participatory, and I know you guys have, you will know all the information you need to be able to go and make an informed decision.
I'll just add to that, that nothing's more powerful than neighbor-to-neighbor, right? Hey, we went to this meeting, you know, last night, did you know that we're exploring a building project? I'll also say that on some very technical specifics, the district has done a really good job of publishing any documentation that we've been generating, presentations, visioning outcomes. This presentation will be up on the project website that you can direct folks to and go check that out. In addition, every public session we've had, including the visioning sessions, have been filmed. So there's a video record of everything that we've discussed and shared with folks as a way of being transparent and we would encourage you to direct people, again, to the project website to have those resources available to folks. Other questions about the options?
You limit the options to three stories. Is there a benefit of, you know, going higher to reduce the amount of land required for the building and perhaps even putting parking under buildings to reduce the amount of impervious surface required?
Well, let's start with the first part. Yes, the whole idea of going higher versus horizontal is to save site, right? We have a constrained site here, if we can go vertical, that helps us better utilize the site. In terms of parking structure, it's really unlikely that we're going to explore that scenario. It tends to be really expensive and may not actually save us all that much real estate. We're actually doing a parking structure in a public safety facility right now and per parking space, it's quite unbelievable how expensive it is. So we're not currently exploring any parking structure scenarios, but certainly three-story buildings versus two-story buildings help us save on site.
What's the benefit of going higher versus staying at that two? Long horizontal versus?
It's a significant code trigger once you go beyond three stories. Go to four stories, now you're a high-rise building and you're in a whole different section of the code, so your fire protection has to be completed, it's much more expensive. So for schools, the sweet spot is two or three stories, just by the issue.
There are some real daylighting advantages to two stories and educationally, you can imagine, that people would prefer to move horizontally just as a behavior rather than moving vertically. Your existing building is a two-story, we might call it a split level, so that's why that's in the mix of being explored, because there are some advantages to that experientially and educationally. Other questions about the options?
I'm a little confused. I asked a while back about getting a ballpark cost figure for each toilet, so I thought I heard you just say, you won't know about the cost until we actually get to the final one, which I don't think people are going to be happy with.
Well, so the next slide behind these questions, all right? No, you're right on, right? But we don't know, when we go and pull the trigger on that and, right, show you the man behind the green curtain there, it's not going to tell you it's going to be $52.79.
I think we know.
Yeah, so but what it is going to do is it's going to give you a comparative cost basis, not with dollars, just with dollar signs, as to what that is. Because we've been doing this long enough to know, right, that if we don't have that information right when we start to present real dollar figures, people all of a sudden go and say, well, wait a minute, that's not what you told me. I remember, I was in Merrimack and you told me it was $52.79. And I can't do that today because we haven't designed it yet, we don't know even where we're going to put it on the site yet, we don't know how much the MSBA is going to participate yet. So even if we knew how much that building was going to cost, without knowing what level that the MSBA is going to be participating, it really doesn't matter to anyone in this room because what really matters is what the district share of the cost of this new facility is going to be. And we won't know that until we get into schematic design, which is going to be sometime this summer. However, right, what we can do and we will do tonight is we will tell you between these options that we're starting to work through, how do they compare to each other? Because that's really what's important. If cost is a huge determinant, you should know that now. And when we change that slide, we want to get everybody's questions in, we'll talk about that specifically.
What's the decision-making process to narrow these many choices down to fill the few? And then who makes those decisions and what's the time for that?
Good question. So we're hearing feedback from you tonight. We have a joint building committee, school committee meeting tomorrow night where we're going to discuss that feedback and go through an evaluation process that includes these handful of evaluation criteria that Brad shared earlier and a much more robust list of evaluation criteria. And that discussion will lead to the official shortlist. These two committees are the agencies that sign off on what that first decision is to narrow it from the many to the few. And that process is going to start tomorrow night.
Great, thanks again for all the great work you've done. So you're getting questions, comments tonight. Is there going to be some informal poll or something to say, yay, nay, yay, nay?
There's no plan to do, you know, a straw poll of the room tonight. I think we would certainly be interested in hearing from you as individuals if there were strong objections or preferences to something or if you wanted to invite the two committees to think about a particular consideration, you know, that retention area, it's in the too-hard pile, please think hard about, you know, not pursuing those any further. Or, you know, phasing is really important to us, please make sure you think about that, you know, weigh it in a way that's more than other criteria. That kind of feedback would be incredibly helpful, I think, to both committees.
And the meeting tomorrow night, right, which is a meeting where people are going to be looking at this again, is also an open public meeting.
Where is that?
It's at the high school.
So you have the one single-family home that's intruding in front of the high school. I can't imagine a new school is less than $100 million. Why don't you just buy it? Can that alleviate some of your issues?
It would certainly make our job easier, but as we currently understand it, that is not an option that we currently have. It was something, I think, that the district had an opportunity several years ago to potentially acquire that piece of property. You know, it did not happen. So at this point in time, you know, we don't own that land and the way it's been described to us is we don't have the opportunity to go and acquire that based on the discussions that have been held previously.
And with respect to the retention pond, like you already mentioned mitigation, maybe it could be eliminated, but if you had to move it, where would it go? It would be after the middle school's gone, or those options could go there or something?
So today, if we were just starting, you know, a lot of that, of the water that's going in and out of that pond has to do with stormwater. Some of that's coming off of Farm Lane, a lot of it's coming off of impervious surface at the high school itself. And so today, what we would be doing, which is what most conservation commissions would want you to be doing, is to go and use infiltration, right, to get that back into the ground rather than... is to go and use infiltration, right, to get that back into the ground rather than have an open, uh, pond. And so, what we typically would do on, on most of our projects now is we would create an infiltration, uh, area, probably under a parking lot or under a field, where we would take all of that stormwater, bring it into that area, and then it would slowly kind of percolate into the ground so that we would be able to deal with our stormwater that way, rather than having an open air retention pond.
Right?
A quick question. What are, if there are, what are the funding constraints on the, uh, the funding proposal?
Funding proposal?
So, right now, uh, the only constraint is the MSBA process. And that constraint has to do with when they approve on their side their portion of funds at the schematic design phase. So we get down, you know, we pick the one in the next step and then we design that to a schematic design level over the summer. We submit that to the MSBA, they say, "Yep, we agree. This is the most cost-effective and educationally appropriate solution. We're willing to participate." Once they take that vote, then the three towns in the school district have, I believe it's a period of a hundred and twenty days, to secure their side of the funding. So in terms of actually getting money for the project, that's the time constraint that we have. If we need to, you know, shift the schematic design submission date for whatever reason, then all of that would push out accordingly. The clock doesn't start ticking until the MSBA approves their portion of the funding. Correct, correct.
Now, what if the money runs out?
What do you mean, what if the money runs out?
What if the money is unavailable?
For? From the towns or from the MSBA? Um, that has never occurred to date.
So, the, the funding source actually for, uh, the school building construction in Massachusetts is funded through the sales tax, so it's actually legislated. So one penny of your sales tax goes into new, uh, school building construction or renovated school building construction. So each year, what the MSBA does is it looks at how much sales tax revenue they have, how much they're expected to do, and they're pretty accurate on this. And then they go and they say, "With that amount of money in my pocket," for lack of a better term, "we're able to go and do this many school projects." And so with that in mind, it just as, as, as Penn Tucket went through the program, through the eligibility program and through the SOI phase, they make a determination on how many projects they'll go and accept each year. And so, as far as this project is concerned, right? This one has already gone through, okay, those stages. So that money, okay, to the extent that we're able to go and continue down the process with MSBA and the board votes it, that money will be there.
It isn't restricted by this, uh, having generated the revenue from these sales tax, is it?
No, one, one, once, the, the short way to put it is once the MSBA board votes to, to go and accept you into the process, you've gone through the process, and then subsequent to that, they accept you to move forward into the next stage, you can bank on the money. It will be there.
Jason, a question for you. The option, A and one, but two, how disruptive to the students and for how long?
How, how disruptive to students and how long? It's, how many of you familiar with that childhood puzzle, the missing square? Right, where you have one empty square in the puzzle and you gotta keep moving that empty square around in order to make the picture? That's what this would be. So, there would be significantly more disruption in this than in this. Right, people would actually be working inside the building that's occupied. And it's significantly longer, right, multiple phases. As Brad mentioned, the twenty-four month construction time for a, a new building, it would be considerably longer than that. How, how much longer, we haven't yet determined, but it would be several more phases in addition to that two-year time period.
It's how bad it sounds, but relocating the high school students for one year is way in the line and build a new place right at the high school, because it seems to be the best construction place. Is it an option you have considering?
We were operating under the assumption that this, there was no place for the high school students to go. Now, if there was a, you know, three-hundred-thousand-square-foot facility lying around that, you know, we could just move the kids right into, then perhaps it would be considered. But, all of our options are operating under the assumption that all of the students, seven through twelve, have to remain on-site during construction.
And, and just, you know, one, one other potential option for something like that was that, well, even if we didn't have a three-hundred-thousand-square-foot building lying around, you talked about modulars, right, that you could go. So, in, in some places, you know, you can actually go and set up a, a little modular village. Here, it wouldn't be so little, uh, but it's expensive. And that is actually one element of projects that MSBA does not participate in. They do not participate in modulars, right? So if we were to go and do something where we actually had to relocate the entire student population for a couple of years, it would be very, very expensive in addition to actually having to then go and build the building as well.
Well, that leads into, that leads into my first question. I have, if you'll be with me, I have three questions. First, first two were easy. The first one is, if that's the case, has anybody thought of double sessions?
My understanding is that double sessions are no longer allowed in Massachusetts regulation.
Not even for buildings that are being built?
Not even for construction.
Okay. Second question. In any of these proposed buildings, are any of the classrooms gonna be without windows?
No.
So you might have some, some wells with, in between and inside core of the building that would have windows?
Potentially, yes, but, but right now, even at this conceptual level, every instructional space is on an outside wall.
There, there may be some spaces that don't, alright, but as Jason's saying, they're not instructional spaces. You know, theaters, for example, we don't want windows in a theater.
Right, right.
And the last question, which is the toughest. Is there anything preventing the school committee and the selectmen in each town from having a straw poll and giving the results back to the building committee?
I'll, I'll defer to, you know, any selectmen, members of, boards of selectmen that might be here.
The question is, is there anything preventing it? Not how you're gonna do it, is there anything stopping?
I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think so. Um, I, I, I'm not exactly sure what the value is with that, but I can say this. I can say that we have reached out prior to, uh, even going through the visioning sessions. I believe, actually, I think it was at the same time. And we went to each board of selectmen so that we could go and keep them appraised of what's going on so that everybody is aware, you know, of all of the steps. And we expect to do that again. And again, I think, you know, it, it's part of this whole notion of it, it, it needs to be a transparent process. People sniff out pretty quickly. I wouldn't want you thinking, for example, right, that we're holding something back. So, so we wanna, we wanna make sure, right, that everybody understands. We have nothing to hide, so it's all there, and so, you know, that's up to the board of selectmen if they wanna do that. I don't think there's anything that would preclude them from doing that.
Well, then I'm requesting that our school committees, at least I can request Merrimack's, uh, have some communication with the board of selectmen to have such a straw poll. I, this gentleman asked a question, and I, I, I hear you saying that, um, all we can do is give advice. It's like saying, the building committee has all the cards, all we can do is say, "Could you please play this one first, or this one second?" And I think if that's the case, the building committee should get a broad picture from the town, each town, as to what they feel and what they think. Not at the end, but as often as possible. Especially when you say, is, at some point, we're gonna have some idea of what's going to happen. I wouldn't want that to wait till we're done one proposal, because at that point, the horse is out of the bond.
Yeah, and, and I, and I agree with you, right? And, and again, right, our job is to try and be as effective communicators as we can. I do know that the constituency of the building committee, right, has, uh, members of each town's board of selectmen on that building committee. So, I, I think that, you know, the, the building committees, at least I can speak for Westmorey, because that's my town, right, are very well-informed as to what's going on with the process, where we are in the process. Uh, and, and I, and I think that, uh, most of the other towns would be, uh, as well.
Then what's their method for getting information?
Well, a- as, as I just said, right? You know, we've had members of, of boards of selectmen come to public meetings. We have members of boards of selectmen that are sitting at this table right now.
But this is it. I, I'm talking about a town in Merrimack, a town of six thousand more people.
We need to get more people from Merrimack out.
Well, that's, that's true, I'm not disagreeing. But, that doesn't mean if you were to broadcast in each of the towns that there would be a straw poll on a particular, uh, series of decisions on schools that there would be a whole lot of people interested in taking part in.
And, and that may be the case, and I, I certainly am not trying to come across as being argumentative. But I think right now, right? I, I don't think that if, if we went to a board of selectmen and said, "Can you take a straw poll, uh, on which option you want?" We don't have enough information, okay, to be able to do that. We may be in the position, okay, prior to going with a final option, where that's something that they may want to do. And if that's the case, our job as the project team is to give them as much information as we possibly can so they can make an informed decision. And if they want to do that, we're, we're more than happy to, to facilitate that.
And I, and I can just add to that. We can, we can certainly bring up that discussion with the building committee and the school committee and take their temperature on whether or not they wanna reach out to the public in that way. But in addition to that, and this may allay some of your fears, the MSBA is gonna require us to carry, uh, the repair-only option in the shortlist for basis of comparison. They're gonna require us to carry at least one additional renovation option, um, to represent that kind of, uh, construction. And they're gonna require us to carry at least one new construction. So whatever the shortlist turns out to be, those elements have to be present, which together represent, I think, you know, the full range of what the possibilities are. And so, those will all, all be there.
And just also to add to that, which is back to my intention, yep. The district went through a fairly comprehensive, uh, approach here using the Thought Exchange, uh, website to be able to go and solicit, uh, opinions on a number of different issues, uh, as it relates to these buildings, and, and had a very significant, uh, response to that. And, and all of that information, again, you know, we've taken back and tried and synthesized into, you know, these options as they distill out. And all of that information is, is also available through the district as well.
Just, yes.
I mean, it doesn't take a length to figure out that two new options and three, two and three, three would be the most likely scenario that people wanna go, right?
That may be the case, and we, we're not quite there yet. Uh, Mike, I vote yours, those, those ones that you like the best. And you're right about that. So, with that, in the interest of time, we have one more moment where we can pause for questions this evening. Let's click the slide and talk about cost, um, and then see what additional questions are generated.
Who wants to talk about cost? Huh? Who wants to talk about cost? So, similar to the format that we've been presenting all night long, right? And, and similar, okay, to what I've, uh, been talking about is, we're not in a position to tell you what we think the building costs yet. We're just not there. But what we can do, right, is we do have, uh, some information that we're able to go and use to help develop a comparative cost basis. So, how do we do that? One thing we know, right, is we know based on the program requirements that we've worked through with the district, how big these buildings are supposed to be. So we know square footage-wise, how big is a middle-high school? It's about two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand square feet. And how big is a new high school only, which I believe is about a hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand square feet? We also know, okay, what market costs are for different levels of construction. So we, we know, for example, okay, what would it cost if we were doing a repair-only type scenario? Right, if we were going through and, and doing the types of repairs that we've spoken to earlier. We also know, when we get into a renovation project, where we've said, "We're only gonna be doing a limited amount of interventions. We're not going to go and make a full-scale intervention to go and meet the program. We're gonna kinda try and shoehorn things." So we're not gonna be doing as much work. So that's not gonna obviously cost as much to do that, because we're not gonna be doing structural interventions. We also know, if we're doing new high school construction on a dollars-per-square-foot basis, generally what the market price for that is. So what that allows us to do, right, is kind of just on that building-only dollars-per-square-footage based on the amount of the intervention that we would do, what that would cost. X times Y equals Z. Very simple, very high level, right? But it allows us to compare between the various options. We also know, right, that there are certain interventions that the MSBA will participate in, and certain in- interventions or options that the MSBA won't participate in. For example, again, repair-only, we're not meeting the district's program when we go and fix that. We're gonna fix the building up, but we won't meet the edu- educational objectives of the district. The MSBA is not gonna participate in that. So whatever the cost of that is, that's going to be entirely borne by the district. No MSBA participation. So, if we were talking about fifty cents on the dollar before, we're talking about a hundred. So it's twice as expensive. And that's really important when we start looking at some of the projects or options, rather, that the district will be carrying some of its own cost. And I spoke to this earlier when we said, "If we're looking at a high school-only option, we've made the assumption that we would be repairing the middle school." So let's just kind of go through these one by one. On the repair one-point-one, top-left corner, right? I just told everybody that the district, okay, will not get any reimbursement from the state. That's for both the high school project and for the middle school project, which we would say we would be repairing, full freight. Phasing duration, if you go and you can think back to that three Ps that we had on that slide, one of the more complex phasings, and I said, "Flexibility," right? It's gonna be, you know, disruptive, it's gonna be longer, it's gonna cost more. All of those things apply to this. The good news on this one is that because we're not doing as much, the dollars-per-square-foot cost is lower. But what ends up happening is when you weigh these things out, the benefit of the reimbursement from the state significantly outweighs the lower cost per square foot of construction. So while you think, or, or it might not necessarily be intuitive that if we just go out and repair this project, this building, it should be cheaper. But in point of fact, it's not, because the reality is if we're comparing all of these options equally, we still have to address two buildings that have significant problems. We're doing them on our own. We're not meeting the educational objectives, and ultimately comparatively, it's more expensive. Does that make sense to people? So if we go down to renovation one-point-one, here, what we've said is, okay, "We will go and renovate the building, but we're gonna make some compromises." We're not gonna meet all of the educational objectives, because just on a very basic level, we could go and say, "If we were building a new building, we would have classrooms that are somewhere nine-hundred-plus or minus square feet, depending upon where you fit within the guideline." We may have classrooms that are gonna be less than that. But we've made the decision, right, for this particular option, that we would be willing to live with that. So when we look at that, we said, "Okay, the state will participate in a high school-only renovation project, but we can only do one project at a time with the state. The middle school will be repaired, that's a full freight, so we're only getting partial. Not getting help on the middle school, getting help on the high school. Three Ps, high phasing costs, right? Dollars-per-square-foot lower than if you were building new construction." The benefit here, what starts to equalize those in terms of more of an average cost, is that we are getting some reimbursement from the state. The compromise is that we're not meeting the district educational objectives. And as compared to a new middle-high school option, we're, we're really only resolving one school rather than two schools, because we're really repairing one versus new construction other. Does that make sense? I'm on a roll. One-point-one, similar to the renovation, right? It's where we're not touching the middle school, because it's a high school-only option. So we're getting partial reimbursement there again. So we're getting partial reimbursement there again. Phasing is high. Okay, here though, we're increasing the cost per square foot because we're putting new construction into the mix. Here we are better meeting the educational objectives at the high school, right? And as a result of that, because we're adding new construction. You can see here where we're getting these fingers and stuff. That raises the dollars-per-square-foot cost of the construction to where it's high. So now we have partial, high, and high, again, more expensive. If we look at new construction 3.1, similarly, high school only. We're not getting credit for the middle school, so we only get partial reimbursement. Phasing here is good because it's on the back of the site, so we don't have as high a phasing costs. Okay, dollars-per-square-foot is high because it's new. So when we looked at that, okay, that actually got $3 signs. Just, I should have actually talked about this first. How we did this to create a comparative analysis is we said, "We took the average of all of the options, and if it was on the average but within 10% range, $2 signs. If it's lower, and unfortunately we didn't have any of those, lower than by 10%, $1 sign. If it's higher than 10%, you get $3 signs." So that was kind of our methodology. Now when you go to, okay, the middle high school options, okay, here we're going to go, now that it's a middle high school and we're doing an ad-reno, we're hitting both schools, okay? We're making some compromises on the program because it's not new, less flexible. But we are getting reimbursed for both schools. Going to do an ad-reno, going to come back, demo the middle school, put the fields in. Two projects, getting reimbursed. Phasing, you'll remember, is high. Dollars-per-square-foot also high because we have a significant amount of new construction. Still making sense? Still on a roll. So when we go now to 2.1, again, right, middle high school, so we're getting reimbursed for both projects. Uh, phasing, okay, and duration here is shown as medium. And the reason for that is because we're building on the middle school site, so we have less what we're calling phasing and moves associated with construction. However, in order to accommodate the middle school and getting it out of the way, so to speak, we have to create a bunch of modulators, buy or lease, that we're going to have to find a home for somewhere on the site. They're expensive, they're not reimbursed by the state. So that increases the cost on the phasing. So while you might think because it's in a good location to do something like that, it actually costs us money because of the modules and because it's not reimbursed by the state. Cost for, for construction is high because it's new, but it falls right in line, kind of in the middle, right on that average. It was interesting, interesting analysis for us too when we went through and did this. It was interesting to go and see how many of these options, particularly the new, uh, middle school, high school options, or the middle school, high school options, how close they actually were. So while we might be able to, sort of to your point, what's the number, right? The number ultimately we'll find out, but the difference between these options is very low. So, you know, we're going to have to make a decision on whether or not we want to spend whatever that amount is. But it really isn't something that differentiates option A from option B from option C. Does that make sense? Okay. 3.2, this could be, you know, the terracy option, where we're building on the back of the site. And it's the same for option 3.3. We'll put this, okay, lump these two together because they're both in the same location. Okay, the difference here is that one is a two-story, one is a three-story. Uh, they both are reimbursable. They both have low phasing because we're not touching any of the other buildings. We can leave the students in the high school, leave the students in the middle school while we're going to building, building. Dollars-per-square-foot because it's new construction is high. But when we balance those things out, again, it shows you the power of the reimbursement, right? It puts you right on that average line again. When you go and look at, uh, the four-series options, again, right on the average, reimbursable, yes. Okay, a little bit different in the phasing, right, because, uh, the high phasing, which is option 4.2, which was along the farm lane side, requires a little bit more phasing and, and some modulators to accommodate that one two-story wing. Dollars-per-square-foot, both high because they're new. Balances out. So, you know, is this project $10? Is it $10 million? We're not going to find out tonight. But what we will find out tonight, and what we're showing you tonight, is that, right, the cost of these projects is dramatically impacted by the amount of reimbursement you get from the state. And the decision that we make as a community to say, "How much of the problem do we want to bite off now?" Because if we want to go and fix both buildings now, it shows us that we can do that more cost-effectively than trying to fix one, all right, and not fix one and not get reimbursed. Particularly when we're talking about, look at those hands, Gull, right? They, they sense he must be done now, right? Particularly when we're talking about large, uh, amounts of money. And, and that's what this is going to be. This is going to be the largest expense that these communities, okay, have made. No doubt about it. Always it, we're always the bearer of bad news when we come in and we say, "Hey, we're going to build a school project, but guess what? It's going to cost you a lot of money." No different story. But does everybody understand what that slide was saying and the intent behind that slide? Because if, if you don't, we can talk about different things, but that was the key takeaway there. Okay. Thanks again. Can we go back to this slide? It is great. I just want to make sure I appreciate plenty of money, you know? This is the cost of a restaurant. Sorry, I laughed. Oh, that was great. Um, the average, the average is the same for all 10 options. So, you know, you have $2 signs of the average. After you've been reimbursed by the state, all the costs of modulators, things like that, appreciated. The average is the same to the school district. So we, so we looked at it, okay, in terms of what the total cost of, of, of an option would be for all 10 options, add it all up, divide it by 10. That's the average. And we looked at it on the basis of district share. So, and, and we, we actually took a relatively conservative posture on that because you remember, I think Jason said at the very beginning, right, the district is, has been, you know, got a 52-point-something percent reimbursement rate, but because of some of these subcaps that are in there, spoke to the 8% cap, which I very strongly feel will probably exceed. We typically do, just because it's, it's a, not an urban site. We'll get less than that. So we've actually assumed, uh, that we would get somewhere around 40% in, in this. So that's conservative. Uh, but it, it's relative, right? It doesn't matter between the options.
I, I think you kind of repeated what I said, just want to make sure. So let's say they're all 10 million, multiply it by 10, divided by 10. Or sorry, add them all together, divided by 10, the average was 10 million. So RP 1.1 is plus 10%. 1.1, R 1.1 is average $10 million. Yeah, after, one would be 11 and one would be 10. After being reimbursed by the state, after, um...
District share.
Yep.
And I have a question for our finance guy, Mr. Laverick. So who's financing this?
Well, the MSBA will fund roughly their percentage, 52 minus whatever they want. And the taxpayers of the three towns will fund the rest of it.
Yeah, but we're going to borrow the money, right?
Oh, God, yeah.
Yeah.
The district will borrow the money, and it'll be assessed to the towns based upon the formula in Mass General Law, which is basically the percentage of student you send to the entire district.
I'm sorry. So we're going to borrow, we're going to borrow, you know, X millions of dollars from the state? The state's going to loan to us, right?
No, we'll go, we'll go to the private market. We'll send, we'll go, we'll bid it out to see who will pass the cheapest interest rate. That's about the deciding factor of this thing. Give us the money the cheapest.
Okay. Just, just to be clear on that. So if, if the project costs $10 million and the state reimburses you 50%, the state is going to pay for $5, right? And you're going to have to go and finance the other $5 in order to get to your project. Right, they're, they're, they, they fund that in advance. It's not like the old MSBA.
Thank you.
Which of the $2 sign new construction options you feel has the lowest amount of phasing and the biggest, I'll call it bang for the buck of the dollar, but least amount of expense associated with modulators or temporary circumstances?
Good question. We, we could have made 4.2 a $2.5 sign because it has extra modulators and extra phasing. So the short answer to your question is, uh, option N 3.2 and option N 3.3 are the least disruptive to students, can be constructed the fastest, and have the highest eligibility for reimbursement for the 7-12 population.
Can you try to clarify a little bit what you just said about the cost? Because I don't believe that any of the towns will be borrowing this until the very end of this. So it could be two or, two or three years down before we could actually borrow that money to fund our portion of the project.
Why is that? Because...
They banned it during the project temporarily. And then at the end, it's one large borrowing for the town. So that could be two, two and a half, maybe three years out.
And, and so who's funding the project during construction? The state?
The state's funding it. We're funding it with what they call a ban, temporary banning, so we don't do the final borrowing until the end of the construction.
Like, but it's, it's still, if, if you, if you had to go here, right, it's still coming out of your pocket.
Coming out of your pocket.
Yeah, of course. It's a different financing vehicle to be able to do that. It's done on a short-term basis, right? To go and make sure that we get everything done, we know what the number is, right? So that we, we've got a path straight. And then they're going to go out and they're going to do a long-term borrowing for that. But it's...
For my daughter that's going to be going to high school soon, let's get her done.
Brad, Brad, we've got a question over here.
Yep.
Knowing how many unknown variables still exist, are we really ready to ask the town taxpayers to fund the next phase when actually we're looking at, potentially in my mind, an extension of the feasibility phase?
That's a, that is a fantastic question. Because right now, okay, what we're doing and what we've been commissioned for and what the, the towns have contracted for is to get us through that first, those first modules, 3 and 4, that Jason spoke to, I think, on the very first slide. There are eight modules in the MSBA process. And so this is the first part, and, and the big thing here, as I think Jason alluded to, is the number of options that we have. We started with many, and now we have 10. What we're going to be working towards tomorrow is to get a recommendation and vote to whittle that down to hopefully three or four. And then we're going to take that, and we're going to take that, distill this information down more to get to where we choose one. But hold on, we're not asking the town to do anything yet, right? Because we, we've gone and said, "Taken that three or four, and now we said, 'Okay, that's the one we want.'" And then they send us off, and they said, "Now we want you guys to go and do the design on that to be able to go and come up with something that we can hang our hat on." Because as you correctly point out, there are a lot of unknowns still. And so during that phase, that schematic design phase, right, which is a significant portion of the work that we still have to do, we might be roughly, you know, getting towards halfway through the period that we've been commissioned thus far, when we have that second half to really go and start to design that one option that has been selected as the preferred option. And then we're going to go and take that and we're going to estimate it. And it won't just be us, right? So we have an independent estimator that goes and estimates that schematic design. And then subsequent to that, we will have the OPM, or in this case, a construction manager that this, uh, that the building committee has already signed off to go and use that as the delivery method for this particular project, which we think was a good choice. And they will go and estimate it along with us, our independent estimator. And then those two estimates will be reconciled. Subsequent to that, right, that will also be worked through with the MSBA. And the MSBA is there. We have four, three, three submissions, okay, in these two modules. And the MSBA goes, and they're very diligent. They have also an external, uh, uh, firm that goes through everything that we do in each one of these submissions. So you never have it 100% nailed down. But I have to tell you, this process, okay, is very thorough. And so we will eliminate a lot of those unknowns, okay, to a point where the MSBA, who does this throughout the entire Commonwealth, okay, they will not let us get to a point where they allow their board to vote on it unless they're 100% happy with it. So they will not go and let you have, you know, a whole bunch of unknowns that are out there. And when we get to that point, okay, and we've had that estimate, we will sit down, okay? The district will sit down, negotiate through what the reimbursement, the final reimbursement rate is as a determination of eligible and ineligible costs. So we'll know what the MSBA will reimburse and what they won't reimburse. And we'll know that. That'll be in writing. And so we'll know what the district share is, and we'll know, okay, what the MSBA shares.
But you're talking about working through all the different phases that are still unknown. I'm talking about how do you get approval for a three-story building on a within its own, within its own...
We, we, we will, we will start to, in that schematic design process, we will be starting to work through those issues. Okay, we will be, we will be working in more detail, okay, and going to the confirmation commission to get those ironed out. We, we will have a very high level of confidence. We won't actually have it fully permitted because you just wouldn't have all of the design done to support that. But we would be going within with a very high level of confidence. If we had Judy Meiser coming back, or, or, or the, anyone else from the Conservative Commission said, "You know, that's just not going to fly," we wouldn't be pursuing an option that we, we couldn't make work at that location.
So what of the other options might fit in?
I think Jason spoke to one of the options, okay, one of the three-series options there, where, where that retention pond currently is, okay? It's not a building that's there, but we may have, we might have to try and alter something, okay, with the fields or the parking in order to try and work around that. Is it optimal? Absolutely not.
Because it's very time-consuming.
Well, it's, it's part of the process, though. I mean, and, 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 you know, it happens, it happens everywhere. John, okay, was project manager on Wilmington High School. And, you know, if you want to talk with him about, you know, wetlands for the next two hours, he can give you, you know, how difficult that process was, okay, in Wilmington.
But we got to build it.
But we got to build it. I know we did because I, I was over there watching the lacrosse game, okay? And so, you know, those are the things that we have to go and work through. But when we go through the process, you know, even if, even if we wanted to do it, the MSBA isn't going to let us do it unless they, they go and say, "Okay." It, it's almost like an insurance policy.
Can someone else ask a question? No more?
We have a new one.
Okay, well, you guys can fight it out.
I hate to bring the question I had up before, but it still bothers me that you've said, I've heard you say, "You know how much it costs per square foot to do a renovation? You know how much it costs per square foot to do, uh, repair? You know how much it costs for new construction? I don't understand how everyone here can make a decision in the next few days about what's the right option, when you still don't have any idea of what we, we really were talking about. Why would it be so hard to come up with a ballpark figure? I think no one, no one here would expect it to be perfect. But an approximate number? I mean, the people in Merrimack here, last year, we made the decision about the police station. We were given an approximate number. I don't think it's too much to ask for that year for the high school, for what you were talking about.
Sure.
Brad, can I interrupt you here?
Yeah.
A little bit of time constraint. I want to remind the public we're meeting again tomorrow. By all means, uh, please come and join us tomorrow night. You may get additional information, et cetera. But a lot of people have a lot of questions, and we've had a lot of you people haven't been able to have your question asked. I see four over here that's had their hand up all night, and they haven't been able to ask it. So for time-wise, because we're losing a lot of our public, Brad... So, time-wise, because we're losing a lot of our public, Brad, can we wrap things up shortly?
However you want to work this, man.
Let me answer that one question, though, before we go.
So let me try that, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna give you complete satisfaction. But, okay, it's because what we know is what the market prices are for those types of things, we don't know, because we haven't designed yet, exactly what that means for this building. But what we can tell you is all of those options, right, that we've presented are within 10% of each other. And so part of the question here is, in fact, right, if you made a decision that high school only was the only way that you would want to go, right, three out of those four options are gonna be 10% more expensive than a middle's high school solution. Right? So that really is why the comparative piece, and I do understand that, but you know, we all know, right, that it's not gonna be $30 million or $40 million to build this school, it's gonna be more than that. But whether I go and say it's $52 million or $56 million, it doesn't really matter, because those, the kind of, the locus of all those things is so close. And I don't wanna put it in a position where everybody starts to focus on the absolute number right now versus what is the best option, because the cost here, okay, comparatively isn't a huge driver in the decision-making process. I'm sorry I couldn't give you more satisfaction on that.
Should we go with this question?
I don't have a question, more of a comment, Chris Wild West Newbury. I've worked in commercial construction of this sub for 35 years, so a lot of this stuff seems, to me, fairly simple. Renovation and repair is a potential disaster. You're taking a deficient building that's 60 years old and trying to make it to today's standards. As we know from page school, you don't know what those variables are and what's gonna bite you in the backside. So unless you have a historic building or site limitations or zoning, typically it's preferential to go with new construction. With that said, as Mr. Terese said, 3.2 and 3.3, at the end of the day, are the very reasonable options. They accomplish every objective you want, the only variable is if the detention pond stays a-go, those allow for that provision. So I've distilled it down to that. The last comment is, what we're all not talking about is the most expensive option. The most expensive option is to do nothing, or not to have this in some fashion pass. 15 years ago, it failed within the district, and the state didn't wanna give us another opportunity. Through an incredible SOI that the superintendent put in, the district has had another opportunity to build a new project at 52% or whatever the reimbursement rate is. That's a lot of money. If we blow it this time, we're gonna still own these buildings, they're gonna cost us incredible amounts of money on an annual basis to maintain the repairs, the pipes bursting, the electrical systems, and at the end of the day, in a certain timeframe, you're gonna have to build a new structure somewhere, and it's gonna be on the town's dime without any reimbursement. That's the most expensive option. So anything we have here is still better, and you better start selling that to the community to make it work.
One question from this young lady out here that hasn't been answered.
Jennifer O'Malley with Merrimack. I don't know where that, woven. If you've thought about, even a line item, when you're proposing to people for an offset of the energy efficiency, I believe the buildings, the two schools are built 58 or 63, something like that, and you just can't make that building energy efficient, no matter what you do. So there's an offset. If we build a three-story new building, our maintenance costs are gonna be a lot cheaper than they are by repairing the current schools we have. And even if we add that as a line item at the bottom, hey, by the way, this is gonna cost this much, it'll go up, and this will cost this much to run, I think that would help us sell, sell that.
That's a really good point, right? Operational costs don't go away forever. Good point.
All right, I wanna thank Dawn Woody, Brad, Jason, John, thank you very much for your presentation tonight, and hope the public are informed, and I'm looking for somebody to make a motion to adjourn. I got a motion, I got a second discussion. Everybody have a good night.